Okay, we're all in the Rochester Council meeting. They're ordered for February the 26th. As usual, we'll start with pledge. The council in here, would you start us, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes from January the 22nd?
Make the motion, we approve the minutes?
Devin has made a motion to approve the minutes on second. And Heidi has moved to second. Those in favor? And unanimous. Thank you. And then the board of public works to save the minutes for January 3rd, 17th, and 31st, or provided a warning for information only. Okay. We're gonna jockey things around a little bit here because we have a special visitor tonight who wants to speak, and he's going to do it with Randy. Randy, would you step up and give your committee report? And then we'll have Mr. Heidi join you after we're done to give an update on the Fourth Street project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've been awarded $633,600 in Federal Highway Administration Construction and Construction Inspection Funds for the federal fiscal year 2024 for ADA ramp and sidewalk upgrades. We're having an early coordination meeting with the district program director in La Port Indot on March 4th to get this started. Then I've been working on restrooms there, converting them to gradium to ADA. We finished--
Standards.
Yeah, used to standards. We finished moving partitions and amends today. And then I've also been helping the street department. I've been blowing snow in the city parking lots whenever we get called out. Also, we have about four more lights to replace in the city, and then we should be done with the LED upgrades. That's all I got.
That's a total of what, roughly? Five hundred and sixty lights. Okay. Thank you, Randy. David, would you want to step up? David Heide is here tonight from E&amp;B, and I want to thank you for coming in tonight. You're supposed to be in Indianapolis, right?
I will be. I will be.
I want to caution you on speeding, okay? But thanks, David. Would you want to give us an update on the Fourth Street, Ohio Street project?
Yeah. As I think most of you know, the Ohio Street section got started last year. There was some delay getting started for some things that needed to be done with drainage for. Once we got started, our subcontractors that did the underground didn't get off to a good start. I don't think there's any question about that, which got us in a position. With that, we got into some additional dewatering issues. Had just everything that we could find. When we put a shovel in the ground last year, we found it. It didn't go that smoothly. Once we got up close to Fourth Street, there was a problem with utility relocates, so we had a delay. Thanks to the mayor, actually went down to Koko himself. We got that expedited a little bit over what would have been. You probably saw the poles finally got moved just last week. There was some question why sidewalks didn't get tied all the way up to Fourth Street last fall. It was because the utility poles were in the way. Without those being moved, the curb raises could not be put into place, so part of the paving couldn't be done, all tied back. So there was additional right-of-way that the city had to acquire to help keep the project moving that created a change in pipe and a change in some of the design that cut across there on the, would be the southwest corner of Ohio and Fourth Street, which cut across that property more that created that. That was done, my recollection would be mid to late November. Obviously, you don't do a whole lot of dirt work at that time in Indiana. But the big push that we had going on at that time was try to keep things going so we had all the underground done prior to close for winter. So we kept it going as long as we could. We held the asphalt plants open so that we could at least get the asphalt in place. I think we did that maybe the week of Christmas. So we finally got that secured at that time. Of course, at that time, freeze sat in and we were done. We started back. Our subcontractors started removing sidewalks this week. Been down there on the north side. The sidewalk is being removed. So weather permitting, that sidewalk is going back in from there. As you start again in the spring, obviously, there's contention again, but the focus will be with due to the north side curb. We're working on looking at different ideas to expedite the project overall. We submitted a proposal to Donahue, the design firm, a couple of weeks ago. They were not receptive to that plan, so we have come up with some alternative plans, and we've talked with Donahue about sitting down and seeing what we can do to come up with different ideas to expedite what we can and still give the city the job that they paid for. I apologize for the state that that project is in. It was certainly never the intent that it would have gone the way it did. We are the local contractor, although we really didn't do anything on that project last year until we patched the asphalt and put it in the timber. But it's our project. You know, we own it. It was our subcontractors out there working, and clearly, it hasn't gone the way that anyone would hope, and for that, I apologize. I do want to thank Randy and Derek and the mayor and everyone who's out there helping expedite where we could. We appreciate that, and all I can say is we are working everything we can to diligently move the project forward and make sure we do everything this spring that we can for the ease of the traveling public to get that done sooner rather than later.
David, I thank you very much for wanting to come and speak tonight, and I've got to explain to everybody, David's motivation was your article, Wes. It got all of our attention, and rightfully so. I mean, this has not gone the way that we had anticipated by any means, and we did lose some time, and now we're trying to make up that time. And if I were a homeowner over there, I would be frustrated. I've talked to some of them over there during the project phase, and they've been very, very cooperative and very patient. Mr. Graham, I agree with everything he said to you in the paper, Wes, his quotes. I disagree with one thing, or I want to clarify one thing. His quote was, "I don't know whether to point a finger at the mayor or the contractors." I want to make it perfectly clear, I'm the guy who takes the responsibility. When you are put into this chair, it goes with it. David's been very gracious tonight, but I'm the guy who takes the responsibility for what happens out there. You can't always stand in the limelight and take a bow for the things that are good without having to expect that you have to stand up and take what comes with the bad. Well, this is the bad. Now, the good part is, we're going to make this right just as soon as weather permits. Right, David? That's certainly our goal.
That is correct.
Wes, I want you to come back and take another picture for me, and in the wall of pride that's out there, we're going to have before and after. Okay?
Wes, I'd like to invite you in May. Where to? Come before that.
Well, you know, and David is, they are the hometown company, and the one thing, you know, we were talking about when this project started off with, thank God, we got a hometown company that's behind this, because it's right there in E&amp;B's backyard. It's going to be the model for them to show customers and such that come to see them. So we'll get it right. I thank you, David. I know you really wanted to talk tonight, and you interrupted a meeting in Indianapolis to do it.
I appreciate the opportunity. I want everyone to know that E&amp;B will do everything we can to expedite that project.
Anybody have any questions for David? Mason, you don't have any questions for him? Okay.
Duty.
Thank you, sir. Oh, you do have a question?
You have a question, sir?
I was just wondering if May was the expected time to--
I would anticipate the weather to be better by May.
Okay.
I would anticipate less mud in May. Obviously, this time of year when you have frost a few inches down below the surface, water can't go anywhere. This is the time of year that you have the freeze thaw. So you're, you know, if the farmers aren't in the field, we can't do much of dirt. You know, we all get in the dirt, play in the dirt about the same time. For me to stand here and give a completion date, I'm afraid Wes would put it in the paper. I'm sure he's listed. And so it's very weather dependent. You know, I could give a, I'm not going to, but I could give a perfect scenario type thing, but then that becomes, well, I thought they said that. And I would rather just say, we're going to do everything we can, and I will come back and update you as we go through, but to give a completion date would be virtually impossible.
Well, I appreciate the pavement in December. I live on Clayton, so I'm just a block from Ohio, and when the roads are closed and traffic moves, and so I get to go through that regardless of the road condition. And that December asphalt was a shocker, and pleasantly so, so I'm glad that was done.
I agree, that was a shocker.
Well, and then I might add to that, too, the new weekly meetings, project meetings, one of the concerns as time was dripping away or lapsing was, we want to get the pipe underground, we want to get it closed up, and we want it to be closed up in a fashion that's going to be safe for the winter. So you guys held the door open for those, the asphalt quite a little while for us. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Heide? Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Drive safely.
Yep.
Okay, let's back up here now and look under communications. Next meeting packet information.
Yes.
What's that all about?
Well, I'm trying to be proactive. I will actually be on vacation next meeting, and I will be leaving.
Unacceptable.
I know. Unfortunately, spring, fall, with the same fast.
Do you think she's in the water department or something? I guess she is.
Knew it was coming.
Right there. Light that right out there, Gacy.
Sorry, Derek. No, I will be leaving March 19th, and I will not be returning until actually the day of our meeting, March 26th. So my--
So I can't make the meeting?
Well, I probably will, because that's the way that I am. However, if I have a flight delay or something, Carolyn will be here in my place. But I do want to send the packets out before I leave. I do not want to put that burden on her if I can prevent it. So if there's anything that you anticipate that you would like to have on the agenda for next month, please have it to me by mid, say, March 15th if you could, 16th, somewhere around in there. And, but I will have everything else ready to go. If there is something at the last minute that does need added, please coordinate with Mayor Nitten and Carolyn, and they will do their best to get that on the agenda. It may not be included in the electronic packet. So Wes, if you need anything that comes up afterward, just let me know when I get back from vacation, please. That was a, trying to be proactive.
Okay. Now, we've got a public hearing to open up, and so I will do so right now, open a public hearing regarding street vacation petition by Mr. Gary Clevenger. There she is.
I didn't know if you had more to add to it.
We never know.
You never know.
I was waiting.
You never know, Casey. I kind of thought Gary was going to jump up and hop over the days here.
Oh, no, you could. You could. I could pass on the floor there. Mr. and Mrs. Clevenger are requesting that the platted right-of-way lying between lots 19 and 20 in Improvement Company addition is a portion of what used to be Fifth Street, what is Fifth Street according to the plat, be vacated. In this particular section, it's 145 feet in length, and the right-of-way that was platted in 18 something or other, this was the original plat, where it existed, it was platted as a 60-foot right-of-way. In this particular case, this right-of-way is not being utilized as a public throughway. Matter of fact, it dud ends into Four Seasons Mobile Home Court. So for the major, you know, for the main use of this, the idea was that Fifth Street, Fourth Street, this entire area would be extended to the east. When that land was further subdivided, it was not. It became Four Seasons Mobile Home Court. It is all one parcel. So the extension of Fifth Street is pretty much a moot issue at this point. So as it's platted, it will not serve the intended purpose as it was when it was platted. So Mr. and Mrs. Clevenger are asking me to present this for them and asking the council to vacate that portion. Any questions?
It'll be split between 419 and 501, correct?
Correct. It's Lot 19 and Lot 20, each get half, so each get 30 feet. And when the ordinance goes over to the auditor's office, they automatically do that unless there was subsequent documentation of agreement between the two owners. But it's just, it's automatic. The subdivision splits it, splits the land. And it goes back on tax rules.
Is there any opinion from the other owner?
I have not heard anything. Chada, did you get a phone call from anyone?
The only thing, I do have a signature that Mr. Fernandez?
Fernandez. Victor Fernandez.
Victor Fernandez. He did sign, and my understanding was is there was just a verbal, there was no issue with that at all. And he was the only homeowner, I believe, affected. Or only other.
He would be.
And he initialed, actually, Mr. Clevenger provided, that he initialed all of them. The entire petition, every page of it, so.
Any questions? Comments? Concerns?
I was wondering, are there any utilities underground that would be affected? Does the store run through there that would, do they need to cap off or anything?
You wouldn't cap it off. You actually don't do anything to the utilities when an alley's vacated like that. The ordinance actually specifies that the easements for all of that still exist. Those aren't vacated just because you vacated. So whatever's there is there. And just like any other homeowner, you know, an 811 date would have to occur before any kind of construction on it. Of course, you have setbacks, you know, and that type of thing anyway, but I would imagine everything runs up, runs up the north-south streets, but I can't imagine they would stunt anything into Fifth Street, but it's possible, but it stays.
Do we have a motion regarding the vacation petition?
It's probably here.
I'm sorry, we're going to close the hearing first. Any questions from the floor regarding the vacation issue? Okay, then I would, I would make a motion, or I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask something, that it should be corrected in the minutes. I don't think that it is. I was down there, the street sign does say Clayton Street.
Clay Street's not that.
And where?
On the minutes.
Oh, on the agenda.
So, I mean, that's a small thing, but anything that we do have recorded, we should--
Have it.
This was all provided to me, so--
That's fine. I was there, they took a look at it, and it was Clayton Street.
The petition says Clayton, 501. No, my agenda was, I, when I typed the agenda--
No, I didn't take them up.
I typed Clayton Street on the agenda. So, no, your documentation will-- Make sure the legal is in there. Normally, we don't put the street--
No, it has names.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, the legal description is 60-foot wide, east-west right-of-way, 145 feet in length, lying between Lot 19 and Lot 20, located in Improvement Company addition as a portion of Fifth Street, and a platted subdivision, subsequent amendments located in City Rochester. So it does say Fifth.
Okay.
I apologize for the confusion. I just wanted to take you all around the toes.
So without any other questions, okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Seconded by Goodman, seconded by Heidi, those in favor, close the meeting. It's all unanimous. You have to abstain, that's for sure. Meeting's closed. Okay, now I would entertain a motion to, for the vacation petition. Someone like to make a motion? Okay, I'm sorry. It's an ordinance, 01-2019. I'd have asked for a motion for the first reading of ordinance 01-2019.
By title only, so moved?
Well, it's been moved and it's seconded to read 01-2019 by title only. Those in favor? Those closed?
Ordinance number 01-2019, ordinance vacating public ways, City Rochester, Fulton County, Indiana.
Okay, and discussion on first reading? I'd entertain a motion for the second reading by title only.
So moved?
Second. Okay, moved and seconded by Fitzwater, those in favor? Okay.
Ordinance number 01-2019, ordinance vacating public ways, City Rochester, Fulton County, Indiana.
Okay, and I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and have the third reading by title only? So moved by Thompson, seconded by Smith. Those in favor? You're on.
Ordinance number 01-2019, ordinance vacating public ways, City Rochester, Fulton County, Indiana.
Okay. Make a motion for the passing of 01-2019? So moved? Moved by Goodman, seconded by Garrett. Those in favor of 01-2019?
You have one exception?
Pardon me, he abstained. Or recused himself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another public hearing for the additional appropriation? We'll open up another public hearing for additional appropriation for the area planning contract? Oh, don't leave, you want to listen to this case.
I'm not, I'm actually just cold.
Okay. I would--
Listen--
Like to have an explanation, Chada?
Well, we've already had an explanation, but I will review it again. Back in, I believe it was December 17th, when we had the conversation about funding for the area plan office and what that looked like, we had a plan for that in our budget, so I had explained that I would be bringing forward an additional appropriation request. Council had said at that time to take it out of your budget. That's what this is. And this is the total amount for both pays that were paid out, or were agreed to, I should say. Casey did provide an invoice for services provided, and both invoices have been paid. So this is the additional for those services and fees.
Okay. Any questions for Casey? Or Chada? Or Casey?
Balls in your court, man. Ninety-five thousand. And that's, and that's actually a little higher than what the total invoice amount was.
Did you tip her?
No.
Okay.
I just did that in case there was something that had came up additionally, just in case. I mean, it's not that much over, I think, I only rounded that about 1,500, but that, like I said, that was just in case something else came up that she needed, and then you guys would have it in your budget.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Okay.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Suspend the motion that we close the public hearing by Goodman, seconded by Heidi, those in favor? Unanimous. It's closed. Now I would entertain a motion for the reading of 01-2019. Do I have a motion? Moved by Smith by title only, seconded by Thompson. Those in favor? Unanimous. Please move the resolution.
Resolution 01-2019, additional appropriation.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Goodman, those in favor? Okay. Those in favor of resolutions 01-2019, seconded by raising your hand? It's passed. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, okay. I think that takes us through everything. Public hearing side, now we're down to department head reports. We heard from Randy, let's start here from Fire Chief Butler.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
For January 2019, structure fires, one in the city, two in Rochester Township. Vehicle fires, one in the city. Field fires, one in Henry Township. Electrical fires, one in the city. Auto fire alarms, one in the city, three in Rochester Township. Stove fires, one in the city. Utility pole fires, one in Rochester Township. Gas leaks, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Calls for smoke, two in the city. Accidents, two in Rochester Township, one in Liberty Township. Medical assists, 13 in the city. Drove the ambulance twice, three in Rochester Township. CO checks, two in the city, one in Rochester Township, one in Newcastle Township. Rescues, one in the city. Service calls, three in the city, for a total of 43 calls, and we did one drill. As of today, our runs are at 91, so I don't know why there were such the influx, but you can see it's been a variety of everything. It's just not one particular situation. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Chief Butler?
You guys about ready for another load of plywood?
I'm sorry?
You guys about ready for another load of plywood?
CJ? Thank you.
Okay, Chief.
Well, let's see, for the month of January, there were a total of 17 accidents. We issued 52 total warnings, 45 were for traffic, seven were for city ordinance, 80 total offenses, 45 being traffic, 37 criminal, and six juvenile. There were a total of 44 case reports, 525 calls for service, 12 tow vehicles, and 15 people incarcerated. And then you have the crime, and those individuals were alive for it.
And then you have the crime, and those individuals were alive for it. Other than that, we're struggling on our Ford, that we ordered September. Got a, uh, arrival date of this week sometime, we're being told. We'll see what happens, but I was told that, since, we should see, see it arrive sometime this week. And that, just gonna wait and see, I'll get a fire truck before I get my police car. It, a lot of it's out of our control.
Which is on.
And it's out of. It's out of Rochester's plan, unfortunately, it was just. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Chief Sean? Thanks, Chief. Lenny Conley.
Well, we came in plow and sand at various times, uh, estimated we've used a, a little over three hundred tons of salt and sand in January, February. I ordered half of our quota of salt, uh, replenished our pit, um, mixed, we got it mixed up with some sand, and as we gain room, I will finish our, uh, order. We've been cleaning trucks inside now, changing the grader blades and fix some wire issues with our front plows. Been maintaining the drains and debris as we've had the rain and melting. Cleaned up the shop and hung up some LED drop lights in the bay areas as the lighting is poor in our farm. Been picking up sticks this week as the weather has been windy out, and patching holes as weather permits. That's about all I have.
Anything for the department?
Basically, it's been maintaining the trash and, um, they, uh, they, they did finish the, uh, number ten shelter on the, on the hill, so. That's about all I have for that.
Any questions for Lenny? Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
And, uh, this is not here this evening, Garrett.
Good evening.
You need to coach. Congratulations on your restless.
Thank you. Uh, for the month of January two thousand nineteen, we ran meters, did orders, prepared to replace bad meters, locates, back washed gutter beds, shut off, swept them off the plant. Um, Everfar was here to do our maintenance on our four generators, everything checked out okay. Uh, we started our asset management inventory program, and, um, that is complete, all except for pictures of the time. And then days that were performed, we fixed an eight inch water main leak at seventeen hundred North Old US thirty-one, which was Dean's food. Sewer department assisted with the vector and loading up, uh, loading us up with backfill. And then I, there's quite a few list of callouts I can go through if you'd like, or I'll take any questions. I will say, all of them are pretty much freeze ups except for a few. That was due to the cold temps.
How's your new employee working out?
Good.
Good. Any questions for Garrett? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Harry Webb. Rochester County Department.
Well, hopefully today. This is Justin Brady, serves on our design committee, but just got a few little notes here. We are getting, gearing up for doing the bike racks this spring, they're all done, made. People would like to install them this spring if possible. We kinda held off last year because of the streetlight project, but I think we can put them in, put them in places where the, they won't be bothering any of that project that moves forward. We have, we're relying on, uh, cranks welding to install them for us. So I kinda like streamlined, so that, you know, they can do it all kind of at once. Uh, the process is gonna be, they're gonna, uh, core drill a hole in the sidewalk, put the, um, bike rack in, and then it'll get epoxied in. Kind of the process, sets up real quick. But it requires a very significant drill to, to drill that hole. Kind of the process there, we'll be laying those out and marking them, you know, as soon as it looks like the weather's cool to operate, but we'd like to get it done this spring. We've, working on art project, possibly two. Uh, one of the members of the design committee has, is working with the teachers in the schools and trying to come up with a, maybe an art project involving the elementary school kids where they draw flowers, and then we take those drawings and put it onto a vinyl that can be applied to some of the abandoned, uh, building windows, just to kinda decorate up some of the windows and the places that are empty. Just be a vinyl decal, obviously it's gonna require the cooperation of the building owner. We're just looking to kinda spruce it up a little bit, we'd like to coordinate that and the flower plantings and, you know, that are gonna happen. Are we moving forward with the flower pots?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we may not buy all of them at one time, but, uh, plan would be to.
There'll be some of them. So, you know, we might put together a little event that kind of markets all of that together, the new bike racks, the new, um, flower pots.
Have you seen one of the pots?
Yeah, yeah, I like them.
Yeah, I got one sitting right in front of my door.
That could be nice.
Yeah.
Be nice. We can move the old ones someplace else, maybe. What the plans are for those. These will be certainly easier to move, we have to relocate them.
Yeah.
But anyway, kinda putting this.
It's a neat concept.
Everybody is, yeah. So, we'll have a, hopefully have a spring event that'll involve the flowers, the art project, bike racks, maybe do a bike raffle. Something along that line. We're also exploring the possibility of a billboard promoting downtown's dining and shopping. Uh, we've got some quotes from, um, Burkhardt, one other billboard company, either using billboards on thirty-one or on the south end of town, but at this point we haven't got the funds to do a billboard, uh, in a significant location, it's like sixty-five hundred dollars per year. So, we can get a thousand dollars from, uh, the tourism board for a project like that, but, um, we're gonna have to be working with some of the local retailers and see if we can get enough interest in doing something like that.
Sixty-five hundred dollars for a year.
Yeah. Isn't that crazy?
We could build our own, couldn't we?
Yeah, we possibly could, certainly could build one for that, yeah, it's just a matter of acquiring.
Your name Casey?
I'm open to suggestions, but it would be nice to.
Her luck, her luck, I think sixty-five hundred dollars just got cheap.
But we're open for donations as well. And now to talk about wayfinding signs, we have been working on a little project there too, Justin Brady here, this little update.
Well, when we first started talking about it several months ago, um, I, I'm sure you've probably seen it in other cities, just the, you know, library this way, you know, that kind of thing. We looked at, you know, potentially having some money available for it, we do not. So, I've talked to a couple companies, we actually had some, uh, a company come down and just kind of spell out the process of it, and we have some rough costs of, you know, forty to fifty thousand, uh, depending on what, uh, you know, what level we end up doing. That includes like all the design, they, you know, map out the community and advise where they go, and they're like DOT certified signs.
They know, I, I was talking to some folks in Kokomo, and theirs were about five grand apiece.
Yeah.
Substantial.
The, now, we can absorb some of that cost in the installation, um, you know, if we try to, you know, use some local people, you know, things like that, like when we put in the benches, we just went out and drilled holes and, and then.
So, E and B pavings offered to install them, of course, so I'm not sure if that means free, but it would be definitely a reduced cost.
Right, so, really what we're looking for is, you know, is this important? Um, is it something that we, you know, you'd like us to, you know, continue down the road, you know, maybe bring somebody in and actually consult and say, here's where we think the sign should go, this is what we think you need.
Just kinda looking for some direction or desire from the council, 'cause we, at this point, we, at first we thought it was gonna be a DEG funded, partially funded grant to the state, Oprah has a DEG grant that can pay for potentially fifty percent. All that program got away, so that funding mechanism is not available. And they do it in two phases, they do a phase one where they design the sign, design the locations, and then they give you cost estimates. And then the second phase is, um, the implementation phase and the installation phase of it. So it can be bid, um, with one company to do both, or you can get two separate companies, or whatever, but, um, we're just, at this point, we don't wanna continue to spin on wheels, we're, this is not a desired project to continue with, 'cause it is gonna have to be, um, would have to be, you know, put into the budget somewhere along the line, over a year or two process, or some money saved away for it. It's just we don't really know where, if this is even something the council is wanting us to move forward with.
Any, any thoughts?
I always think those signs make a downtown area look inviting. You know, I think it always looks nice, I don't know, you know, if we've got other projects going on, if we wait till we get streetscape stuff done to do those, or wrap those into a budget on a streetscape, or if the, if that's so far out that, you know, we can use signs to help in the meantime. But I, I'm in favor of them, I think they look nice, and they help, especially as we try to draw more people into our downtown that don't know where everything is. I mean, we don't need signs, but they're not for us.
And this isn't just downtown, you know, this, these will be throughout the community.
The, also part of the sign is there's a, you know, they have to have a certain base and then a breakpoint, and then the sign, um, you know, they could be taken off and, you know, as they, you know, you do the light poles or whatever, then you can actually have the sign with the arrows, I mean, you put that right back on, whatever it, you know, you had taken it off of. So they're somewhat portable, I mean, they're bolted down, obviously, but, um, and, and again, if it's, if it's not important, we move on and focus on, you know, the next project. It's just, we just got to a point where it's, okay, well, we have some price points, what do we do?
Well, I think it's an interesting concept, and, and I would be open to it, but at the same time, I just, until I s- uh, was able to look at, you know, how many signs are going up and where they're going and what they're for, um, and relating that to the cost of forty or fifty thousand, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm open to it, is there, um, is, is there a cost for the phase one that you were talking about?
Fifty-six hundred.
Yeah, fifty-six hundred dollars.
And that's the complete design, the layout of the community, you know, um.
You'd have a look, you'd have a quote.
What, what kind of, what kind of points do they point to?
Whatever we want. Um, usually it's like, um, public access sites, you know, the lake, hospital, uh, library.
Swimming pool.
Swimming pool, the, um, he recommended the fairgrounds, 'cause it's, you know, off the beaten path, you know, things like that.
Schools.
Yeah, any schools, um, I mean, it could be anything, it could just be two courthouse, or, uh, we would have some input on what they pointed to, but.
Think the school would pitch in?
I don't.
We have signs, some signs, right, that say.
Brutal methods.
Point out there.
Yeah. It'd be a consistent look, you know, that they would work through this process, and they'd also identify all those items, how many signs are needed to do it, and you kinda come up with a shopping list then as to where your priority is, you know, and it doesn't have to all be done in one year. If you had, once you had the plan in place, you could sit there and say, well, we can budget five signs this year and five signs next year, or whatever. But, you know, there probably are, some signs might be small, you know, less expensive than five thousand dollars, like if it's just a city pool sign sitting in one spot, and it's the only thing they can really point to, it's gonna be a smaller sign, and could have a consistent look, but it may be a three thousand dollars. But it, um.
Did your consultant have any thoughts as to how that would affect your signage ordinance situation? I mean, you, you, you go down this trail and you have a, a, a signage unity established. Then it gets real tough for the Grace United Methodist Church to throw a sign up someplace, doesn't it? Do they, do they cut all that out, or?
Well, it really is the, you know, desires of this council of what you wanna do with it from there, you know, do we take other signs down? Uh, that's really gonna be all part of that, if you, you know, if we can consolidate some of these signs. Yeah, I, I think in most cases, these are gonna be public spots that it's pointing to, it's not gonna be any businesses, or.
And there's not, they're not gonna be downtown, I mean, a lot of the signs won't be there, they could be, you know.
They might point out the parking lots in the downtown area.
Yeah.
It'll park out, you know, point out the library, um, Argerita maybe, um, the city park, yeah.
Yeah, the three companies I, uh, I got, I talked to, um, have all done cities like Kokomo, Peru, um, Plymouth, or Culver was another one that they did, so they were, you know, fairly local, uh, cities, and so I drove around and looked at them, and they all, I mean, they're nice, I don't know, you know, how important they are, but, nice to have.
Did I hear right, you're estimating roughly ten signs though?
Yeah, that's probably a pretty close number, I mean, that number can change based on whatever the budget is, you know.
And, and that number included.
I think you could identify ten spots, but you may say, well, we got four top priority, whatever, but once you have your design made, then you can.
Plymouth has nice signage, but they are not, I don't know how enormous they are, but if they're paying five thousand dollars for a sign that's three foot long and, you know, twelve inches tall.
I don't know, I don't know how much they pay per sign.
You were talking, somebody said here a five thousand dollar sign. Okay, well, the Plymouth signs are good, but I can't imagine those signs costing, and they're kind, they're helpful, uh, but then again, they really don't do anything that Siri does either.
Right, well, the.
And getting you, and getting you around, and that, that they have the signs for, Siri takes you to the same place.
A, a lot of the costs, though, being on a, like, any state highway, they have to have, I can't remember if he described it to us, but the base has to be.
Forward now.
Yeah.
Hurricane crew.
Yeah, and, and the, the breakpoints that they have installed in it can, can cause.
If it hit it with a vehicle, it breaks right off.
Yeah, so, um, and, so, that is a substantial part of the cost, and we haven't talked to anybody, you know, you know, you'd be, anybody that can have the ability to produce these, to talk to them about price.
And most of the prices, or a lot of the prices in that, I definitely think will hold on.
Would you think all the money would come from the city, is that what you're thinking?
At this point, unless we went to a, you know, grander application and did, you know, streets, streetscaping, or bundle this into, um, you know, one other, you know, one other big granting opportunity, it could be thrown in, uh, to some other beautification project, potentially down the road. It's just a matter of, we wanna continue this implementation, or just table it, ponder it.
With, since we have stadium fourteen and twenty-five, which is our ninth street and main street, our local ordinance, the ordinance for signage does not apply, is that correct? Do we have to follow an N dot, right, uh, signage, or have different regulations on those?
Your zoning ordinance for the sign ordinance doesn't apply in the right of way, 'cause you own the right of way.
Okay.
So that, that, that's always been the council's prerogative, but keep in mind, between Ninth Street and Fourth Street is not state highway.
Right, right, but they're talking to other areas of the city, so I'm thinking probably would be out maybe towards the lake coming in or south coming in, you know, so I'm thinking other areas, if that's what I think, that's what's happening.
South going, if they put in the railroad tracks right now, that's state highway, but potentially, if they look into this corridor, that wouldn't be.
Like, if you look between Ninth and Fourth, and even Fourth Street to the pool, your costs should change if, you know, as you're saying, you know, N dot has specs that cost a lot, you know, you might wanna ask them for the difference for not being on a state highway.
Yeah, I think that, you know, his initial spec was, we design them for DOT standards, but, so you can use them wherever, but that, they may have a different option.
If that's a substantial part of the cost, and we don't need them, we either cut our costs in half, or we do.
Right, and, unfortunately, you know, the consultation for him, then to actually. Right, and unfortunately, you know, the consultation for him then to actually put the, you know, fifty-six hundred dollars, I think fifty-six thirteen is what he quoted us. So that was where we kind of just said, why don't we better talk to a person?
And so that's a lot, just to get a picture.
Yeah, you're gonna have, from that, you're gonna have locations, and you're gonna have, you're gonna have a plan that you can then implement when you want to implement it.
Because of the artwork, all of that is involved in that.
They do location analysis. They meet with you and determine what you want, make sure you're highlighting. And they prioritize it, so you have top priority, second, you know, tier.
To answer the question of tonight, what are we going to, I would make a motion that we tabled this for the time being.
Second. It's moved and seconded to table this subject of Wayfair signage. Those in favor, raise your right hand.
It is just, is that an indefinite?
It's the table, the table is indefinite.
So it's not.
It can always be brought back up again, but as far as tonight's going, without chasing our tails around the room too long, I think right now it's just be best tonight to table it.
Is there any kind of a timeline that you have?
No, I mean, we were just, you know, I just thought, we just really wanted to inform the council as to what we had worked on, where we were at, no point in developing this thing any farther if it's not the desire of the city. So it's just kind of, you know, just kind of our initial exploration of the project. It's something I think, you know, as Rochester Downtown Partnership Design Community would like to see done someday, but obviously, the city is in charge of the funds for this kind of project, so if it's not the desire, then we have other things to work on.
Well, we have a motion on the table. It's been moved and seconded to postpone indefinitely the Wayfair signage topic. Those in favor?
I mean, we're just saying, we might be interested in the future, we're not saying.
We're taking, we're just tabling.
I know, but they're looking for guidance. We're not saying scrap it, forget about it. We're saying not right now.
We're saying that's what tabling is, yeah. So we're sitting here for right now.
Yeah, I have to chase, I don't, what I'm hearing is, I don't know anybody who's ready to step up and say, I would put fifty thousand in the budget.
I just wanted to make sure they were clear on what.
You know, perhaps during your budget discussion, you can decide if you wanna build a few dollars into developing this.
If I can build a bit more exactly cost for where we have to put them up.
Projects like this take time. Projects like this take time, so you're looking at, you know, one to your process to do it, so.
Okay, do we have a vote, those in favor of tabling?
I wanna table it for six months. Otherwise, it's gonna be on our agenda every month until, right?
We got, we got a motion on the.
If the motion is to table it, I just, I just told Shawna, it needs to be up as old business next month. To have table, unless you wanna table it to a date certain. That's what tabling is, otherwise, you can, if your desire is to end a discussion on it. If your desire is to end a discussion on it, you don't need a motion. It's up to you, you could, you could table it, but what you really want is to just say, I think we need to move on. We don't have a decision to make tonight. You don't need a motion. You just need to convince the person running the meeting.
Should I withdraw my, my motion?
If you want.
Then I, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, no point in bringing it up every month.
Now, now, now. But it is, can be brought up at any other time in the future is what I would.
Sure.
I don't think I'm saying that we don't ever wanna do it, I just think at this stage. I mean, I'd rather see it wrapped into a streetscape project.
Who seconded that motion?
Withdraw, I withdraw.
Okay.
Anything else? Can I go back to the bike thing for just one quick second? Occurred to me while I was sitting here that one of the Kiwanis International objectives for this year is a bike safety class in every community.
Wow.
And I know they have a week that they are trying to keep for, but I'm not working on it personally, but I know that that's fluid and could change, but it might be something that could go in conjunction with something if you're looking at bike racks and.
Yeah, we're thinking, you know, something in May, yeah, might be fun to bundle it all together.
Okay. And they might have location advertising.
Location for the bike racks? We got general ideas. A lot of them are gonna be where the benches are. There'll be a bike rack at every bench that are currently installed.
Just wanna make sure you don't put those over somebody's shut off.
Right, yeah, we won't do that. I mean, as long as it's visible.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what locations are for.
Yeah, it might be an idea.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't do locations with your holes anyway.
Because I don't think you did that.
That would not be good.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think you did it for the benches, but I never went and looked, so.
Yeah.
I understand that, but are they removable too?
Yeah.
Okay.
The bike, the bike rack is gonna be a little harder to move. It is removable, but you gotta cut the epoxy out.
Oh, it'd be easy to move. We have a thumb.
We have removed.
I'm just asking this ahead of time, so you don't have to remove them. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we'd like to do it once.
If you just give me a location of where they're gonna go, I can look and see if they're even in the vicinity.
We have, we have general map, and we'll get that finalized and get with you on it.
Okay.
So we can.
And just make it easier.
Because there are gonna be some that aren't where the bike racks are, but there's a few extras as well.
Anything else, council?
For Marty, Marty, we, Safe Rapids School did a bike safety course last year. We held it at the, during the four-H Fair, and it was very well received there. We had seventy-plus kids for the benefit of the fair, so I don't know if that works for that group, but it might be an idea that.
He's had something that they plan on doing every year, Terry?
That grant's over, unfortunately, we don't. I mean, we do have a few, like, incentive items. I mean, last year, we were able to give away bikes, so I think ten different kids, but we don't have funds for that this year. So that might take, kind of slide in and take a place. We worked with the Winona Lake Bike Shop. They came over and did a nice ABC of your bike, air brakes changed, stuff like that. Had an obstacle course for kids to ride around and everything. The group wasn't doing that.
Kiwanis.
Yeah, they started, they started bike rodeos back in the day.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay, Terry, I'm gonna have you come up next, before we get into the council.
Yeah, I got right, this is more to work, yeah.
What am I doing? Fedco? Or redevelopment commission?
Whatever you want.
Go ahead.
A redevelopment commission, just a redevelopment commission. We've met a couple times since the last city council meeting. We have a meeting tomorrow, but I understand, Mayor, you're not available, and then Phil Bowers is not available. We had Bill, excuse me, Ben and Bill Beer from U S D M last sort of week, actually, looking at two specific projects, the nickel plate trail extension with our bid of eight hundred thousand dollars for a boardwalk. Unless you guys wanna write a check for that, or twenty percent of that. We're looking at other options. The discussion was to see what we could acquire, additional land to the west. Met with the owner of that land a couple times. He told me this afternoon what he'd be willing to do, so that possibility is a possibility.
Well, I know you're in negotiations there, but is it workable? Just saying, you see a workable solution here? Going through the wetlands just isn't workable, that's not the line.
It would be workable from a construction standpoint, I would think. Obviously, I'd wanna talk to Bill and Ben about that, but the acquisition price was given to me today, and the amount of land and so forth, so we can talk about that. I don't know if we wanna cancel the meeting tomorrow. We also talked about the Apache Drive project. I have a meeting with the owner of that property, but not till after the redevelopment commission meeting tomorrow, so I wouldn't have that information really share yet.
If I may, Terry, and here in the end of the dark, Attorney Perkins, the negotiation of purchase of property is constituted under an executive session, so I would recommend if you're going to be discussing acquisition of property with regards, I would.
We announced that.
As an executive session, that way you guys can discuss numbers freely without.
And I thought we might, in lieu of a couple of absences, look at maybe postponing the meeting tomorrow till, our regularly scheduled meeting would be the end of March, so I don't know if we wanna wait that long, but.
Can we have a tally the attendance of the redevelopment commission members and see if there's a date that we can meet for executive, for any second? Why don't we look, try to do it earlier, meeting them in March?
Yeah, I'd agree. The other redevelopment, we're looking at the manufactured gas plant site that belongs to NIPSCO, it's the end of Eighth Street. I sent Mayor and Shawna, I think, and the access agreement that NIPSCO needed us to sign. They want to do some water wells on the property that the city owns on the other side of Indiana Avenue. I D M is making them do a couple of punches to test groundwater, to see if there's anything leaving the site. They plan to do that after they move the gas line this summer. So they're waiting for weather for that, but they'll need that access agreement to go in and punch a couple wells. They will be permanent wells. They'll just bore down and take a couple samples, and then, I mean, there'll be some disturbance of the ground over there, but, so that access agreement needs to be reviewed and signed, so they have, they have permission to go onto the city property for that. And then, I guess, the other, other topic is, you know, just Highway Thirty-One, what that's gonna look like.
Is there any update on the missing property over there on Eighth Street? Is the boundary moving forward with that?
The phase one is done. It was delayed because of the federal government shutdown, because we were going through the EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant that we have in the coalition with Logan's Court. That has, I just got an email late this afternoon, I think they've cleared that and have scheduled the phase two. They did ask for a phase two, so the idea there is Rochester Metal Products plans to buy that site after the environmental work is done. So the phase one protects them from liability, environmental liability on the site, so that's really all they need to move forward. So I think they want the phase two just to drill it down a little bit more, no pun intended.
See if there's anything there.
So I don't know what their timeline is on actually moving forward. They just want it for a buffer, and then also, they wanted to have access to both sides of the creek, so they could make sure, you know, that if they have to, they'll, they'll be, they'll take some responsibility for going in and keeping the creek open, you know, to prevent flooding. They do have one corner of their property that's in a flood zone, so they wanna make sure that creek stays, you know, empty. So that's another, probably some city responsibilities on that too. Oh, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So we're hoping for Rochester Metal to stay open, so that's another reason.
We're also waiting on a guardrail to be iced out there.
I'm with you.
Who is responsible to keep that creek clean?
I would default to Department of Natural Resources.
I'm just asking, because there's a tree all the way across it.
I would, I would say, Derek, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I would say V N R. There'd be tarries and waterways.
Where's the tree located?
Between our lower shed and the, and the.
Indian Avenue.
And the three culverts are pretty much full.
Are they, what, on Fourth, Main, and where's the other one?
No, I'm talking right there at the, at Indian Avenue.
I've pulled it in because they did clean them out, like, a month ago.
Who cleaned it out?
The county kind of cleaned them out.
There's quite a bit there.
Yeah, the surveyor, through the surveyor's office, the county could have some responsibility there too, on the drainage side, drainage board, Casey, you know. But R and P, they're, you know, they're taking personal responsibility. So that's it for redevelopment commission.
Questions for Terry? Thank you, Terry.
Sure.
You're letting us handle Fedco, okay?
Sure, great, okay.
That doesn't worry you, right?
Nope, uh, good night.
All right, Brian. You're up, Terry.
Mike, you already told us they didn't have a meeting first?
No. It's gonna be you, jumping around here a little bit.
I'm really looking forward to mine.
We're giving some, we're giving some continuity to the, to the presenters here.
Well, Fedco did meet on February seventh, I was not able to attend. Looking at the minutes, a lot of people were not able to attend. So everyone, we were talking about the contractor services, we know where you are. At the appropriate time, Terry, we'll go back to the county and ask for the next six months, and then we'll see where we're going from there. So kicking around the annual meeting, looks like we're, we're gonna go forward with a meeting that's open to the public. We're gonna, we're just finalizing, Terry, the upcoming meetings. The January twenty-ninth meeting with Blair Milo had to be done on, through WebEx because of the weather. There are a few that attended online, so. Pat Brown out of that reached out to Terry after the meeting, he says he is familiar with Belden Company, and they have a system in place that an employee tests positive for drugs, they get them into the rehab and keep them engaged. A lot of things going on, that could be a useful tool for some businesses. No work ethic certificate, Terry needs to reach out to Chuck Evans and Chris Kiesling to find out which kids are still eligible for the certification. A survey he did of local businesses robotics and logistics training came out of, out of that survey. Terry reached out to Purdue to inquire about the training, and he was told there's no training at this time. Also talking about whether or not Fedco should post a job there. One, to kind of let the community to know that the need, you know, we have plenty of jobs here in this area. Workforce is a, is an issue for most companies in the area. There's just not enough people to go around, and as far as I know, I know our business is booming and we're growing at a really rapid pace, and we just can't keep people, and I think that everyone around us is in the same boat. Traditionally, when people think about economic development, they think about bringing in that large employer. We can't handle a large employer right now, just because we don't have people to fill the jobs that they would, they would need. So, I mean, that's kind of where, where I see economic development going is more, you know, workforce development. But we are still looking for that big employer, even though it would be a struggle to, to get employees for it. Nickel Plate Trail is trying to decide what to do after getting a proposal for boardwalks in the wetland area. The extension, it came at eight hundred thousand dollars. Terry talked a little bit about the Brownfield Grant, not only is it Rochester Metal using it, Elliot Hazen's using it for his building on Main Street. The JAG Specialist, Rochester High School's for people to talk to her students about occupations in Fulton County, or to open up their businesses for a tour of a class of twenty, so. Terry, did you have anything you needed added? I said I wasn't at the meeting, I don't want to leave anything out.
Just on the training, we're looking at Ivy Tech or Purdue. We're waiting on House Bill Ten O Two right now in the General Assembly. They'll provide the funding, so it's not a hundred percent off of the employers, out of the employers' pockets. The other Brownfield grant we're using is for the town of Kiwanah. They've got a couple of projects or properties that the county has had on tax sale for a while. They've been sold and offered to the town, or offered to the town of Kiwanah, like, you want the phase ones on those. So we're moving forward on that. Yeah, the thing about the workforce is a big issue. You know, we have two thousand people a day to drive out of the county for, for jobs, so if we were able to attract those people to stay in the county, then we could match those employees up with, with a, with a larger employer here. So that's, you know, still remains a target for us to do that. I guess the issue would be the where, the location, the infrastructure to it, also as much as anything. So part of that infrastructure is underground, and part of it's no human capital would need. So we do have a lot of folks that are residents here that don't work here, so it doesn't be the market for our tracking effort to say we're sending people out that could be attractive. So it's going to be kind of the market for our attracting effort to say we're sending people out that could be attractive to say, if there were a larger employer, so. Part of what's going on.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, Area Planning Commission, Terry.
We did not have a meeting.
That was intense. You know, certain, like, your, did.
Okay, Park Board, Mason Winton.
Yes, all right, we met on the eleventh of February. We finished our elections last month, and we had President D T, but we were short members, so we had no one else to vote on. The new Secretary is Mitch Hayes. Kim Landis, if you remember, last month was her last meeting. The new member was there this month, it's Shelley Coles. And our new auxiliary high school member is Jordan Jennings. Into the meeting, Lori at the pool, if you recall, there's been some issues with the filters, they're very old and outdated and need, need fixed. She ordered some last year, they didn't fit, so the company came, took measurements, took actually one of the pieces with them to custom build. So some of those should be in, in about a month or so, hopefully those work, and if they do, we'll be able to order a few more. I think there's thirty-six filters on our system, and they're five hundred bucks a piece. So she's going to order five a year until they're, you know, all fixed out. They're like thirty years old, she thinks, I mean, they're, they're in pretty bad shape. She's also looking at a new acid that's safer for their system than the current hydrochloric acid that they currently use. So something she might try this year, she's not sure yet. The new slide piece came in, and will be installed sometime when the weather cooperates, I have here, right, Lenny?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And the big shelter, you said Shelter Ten's done? You said that the big shelter's done?
Yeah.
And you're also getting a new shop truck.
Got it.
Okay. And for Lyle at the golf course, he only has five pole sponsors left, and those should be up in the next few months. Pro Shop has been up, open with limited hours due to the cold. And they got the new John Way, or John Deere Fairway mower, was delivered, but they, or I guess it's back from service now, they've taken it apart to sharpen and clean everything. And that is it, any questions?
That's pretty complete. I think, I don't know if we kicked this around or not, this filter situation is probably going to get worse as time goes on. Probably ought to be smart and start to curry some money back for that area. Because that is a pretty expensive thing to replace, one that, she had some figures that were pretty heavy, but it's like the heart of your pool system.
What is the expected lifespan of those filters?
These are the originals.
I know, you said they're thirty years, did they, were they, even they were replaced a couple of years ago?
I'm not sure, and the problem, the main problem is, these are all having to be handmade, because no systems like this anymore. Everything, so.
I was surprised the guy selling the systems didn't say, ah, you know, these can't be made.
So could you imagine what it costs to change your system?
Yeah, I mean, it sounded like five hundred dollars was a lot.
It'd be more, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be a lot.
I, I seen the filters, they're, they're ancient.
Yeah.
I was surprised.
Yeah, so, and she said some of the new filters are like, what'd you say, almost like a sand?
Yeah, it's a whole different technology.
So, so they work, yeah, I mean, what we have works in theory, it's just something that, at some point, they may say, well, we can't get filters.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're exactly right.
How much it cost me on my pool, when I replaced it, how much it cost me on a president before?
So, like I said, ours has thirty-six filters, even the new ones that aren't the same style are many, many less than that.
Well, weren't you surprised the guy didn't, I think you gotta buy a system? So anyway, it's probably going to be good for us to start currying some money back, because, well, the first go-around, Mason, correct me if I'm wrong, the first go-around, they went to make a filter for it, and it didn't work, work, they didn't make it right.
Yeah, they got them, and that's why, that's why this time, they actually took the piece with them, since it was downtown. They were building it last year while the pool was open, got it back, didn't fit, but once the pool closed, they took the, took one of the pieces with them to have them all handmade to the right size.
We'll get those numbers from Lori, and recommend that we start currying some money for a system after, because if she gets by another couple of seasons, I think she'll be very fortunate with it. Any questions for Mason?
One other thing, just off that, putting money aside, because she said it's such an old system that she's nervous at times that, you know, the regulators may come in and say, well, this, this isn't up-to-date technology, or, you know, something along those lines, where they don't accept that anymore. And then would be in a really, really bad position.
Yeah, she's just speculating that, that's never, yeah, that's never occurred, but it's ancient, it's ancient technology. And, you know, praise to her and Kimberly for, for what they put into keeping that pool alive. A few years ago, that pool was going to close, and they put a lot of personal effort into making sure we kept it open. Some of those got upgraded to keep it viable. And it is, it's one of the jewels of our community for young folks, my gosh, you know, how many people, Shaw, do we run through there? It's, it's amazing, thousands and thousands of votes.
I forget what the final number was last year, Lori reported.
It was huge. Big number.
Yeah, it was a lot, you're right, Derek, it was a lot more than I, I just gave a call it up slightly, sorry, was it over ten, ten, twelve thousand?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was higher than that, but we need to keep it going, so start putting some money back for that. Okay, anything else for Mason? Okay, easy, and Council on Aging, Councilman Smith?
Sure.
Sure.
We'll start with the Council on Aging, we met yesterday. The Council on Aging is going to apply for a community foundation grant, that's going to happen later this week. Asking for funds that would provide a matching, our matching requirement to secure three new vans for Transpo. We have a, currently have a quilt that has been donated by Chris Sutton. It's a very nice quilt that is being auctioned, and you can stop by right now and buy raffle tickets for that quilt, if you're so interested. We are currently looking for a board member. We had one that just, work didn't allow her to attend any longer, so we need a board member, and we passed our twenty nineteen budget. For R S V P, the free tax preparation for seniors is continuing through March sixth. So that is ongoing, I don't know how many they've done to date. The green carnation sales have begun, and businesses are being called, but anybody is free to order green carnation, that's a fundraiser for R S V P, and they are a dollar fifty per flower. Unfortunately, they had to cancel the Virginia Beach trip that they had scheduled for May. But the September trip to Colorado Springs already has thirty-five to forty people signed up, so that one will still be ongoing. For Transpo, I thought I would share just a couple of numbers that everybody seems to kind of enjoy. In the month of February for twenty nineteen, they have to date done thirty-two hundred and thirty-one trips.
But for what period of time?
That's February so.
February so far?
So far, yes.
Three thousand trips.
The statistics, the state of Indiana has finally gotten out the statistics for twenty seventeen. And this is based on, according to their numbers, and this is all done by the state, has nothing, we provide data to them, but they compile all these statistics. According to them, the residents, there are twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty-six residents of Fulton County. And Council on, I'm sorry, the Fulton County Transpo, it costs a dollar sixty-five a mile for operating expenses for what the Transpo does. And if the numbers are right, as far as population, Transpo moved every citizen of Fulton County two-point-one-six times in a year of twenty seventeen. So, yeah, and that is way higher.
I don't remember the trip.
Well, you, you wouldn't, you didn't remember a vote tonight.
Oh, okay. He's getting quick.
This is, we are considerably higher than Marshall County and Cass County, and, I mean, our numbers of trips are.
It's amazing.
It's amazing, it really is amazing, so I hope you all were treated well under two-point-one time. Transpo. Other questions, that's the end of my report.
Any questions for Councilman Smith?
I'm, I'm wondering if, last year, they had some passes, the Transpo, for the Area Five Head Start. They had a couple or something designated, so, because some kids weren't able to get rides to the preschool, to the Area Five Head Start, because their, their parents had car issues, or for whatever reason. And so Transpo did provide, provide some passes, and I don't, didn't know if that was continuing this year, or if, if you knew where that was at.
It has not been determined yet.
Okay.
I'm hoping it will be.
Okay, because I'd be happy to support it even outside of the council, if I can give service.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
It is a nice program for those children.
I agree.
Anything else for Councilman Smith? Okay, Solid Waste and Animal Adoption, Councilman Thompson.
No meeting for the animal center for solid waste. Since the January meeting, the recycling center shipped fifty-five tons of recyclables with a value of three thousand fifteen dollars and eighty cents. For the month of December of two thousand eighteen, County Line Landfill received thirty-five thousand seventy-six tons of waste in twenty-two working days. For a daily average, a one thousand five hundred and ninety-four tons per day. Fulton County accounted for five thousand one hundred and thirty-two tons, the rest of the media contributed twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight tons. Twenty-point-one-one tons of out-of-state trash collected. The host fee for the month was forty-six thousand two hundred and eight dollars and sixty-one cents. And the county host fee for the month of December for, okay, the county, fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-two cents. Since the, since the January meeting, we sold a hundred and sixty of orange bags, bringing that total to five thousand six hundred and seventy-five, of which two thousand seven hundred and sixteen were purchased by the city residents, and two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine were purchased by county residents. So far, they've collected three thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars for disposable bulk items. That's about it.
Any questions for Chase?
I have one. Chase, are we still operating under the same operating agreement, when, as when the landfill was open twenty
Correct.
years ago, five years ago?
They're actually looking at that, Stacy just had a meeting with Cody, and she hasn't, I think we're all going to get together, the county, the solid waste, and make up a new agreement. So we're working on that right, actually, right now.
Okay.
Tree Board, Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Tree Board, that's February twenty-first, President Hal Nader, Eric Benninger, myself, and City Attorney Andy Perkins. There's a, some, a few months ago, we met with somebody, Department of Natural Resources, and she was talking about the way ordinances work throughout other areas of the state, and, you know, possibility of upgrading or streamlining our ordinance to make things smoother, that's why we have a tree Perkins there, and we're going to work with him. And at some point, the Tree Board may present something to the council for a possibly revising the ordinances regarding trees and tree law. If it does come out, then you at least know that things have been in the works. They are still working on the, the last contract for removing and pruning trees. They're probably the original contractor, and second one is trying to get them done, but he says they're trying to get them done in January, depending on the weather. So we know what's happened, he's in January this month, so as soon as he's there, we'll get out and get done, we're going to be done. And then the next contract we did after that, he's going to make sure to get the first one done before we get the second one put out. The, Eric Benninger is helping to revise the website for Tree Board, which I believe is under the city as well. And he said once anything is done, he's going to get the changes to Shaw and put publication. Arbor Day is coming up in a few months, and we're working on getting a nice presentation, commemorating all the years the city has been a continuous numbers of years as a tree city. So we're going to be doing that, maybe working with the high school for ideas of that, but getting the kids involved for the next generation to understand what's going on, and hopefully they'll when we're their adults, you know, they'll understand what's going on. One thing that's been, has carried over from the previous meeting was the terms for each of Tree Board members, as, you know, it's one-year, two-year, three-year. Most of them have been on there for a number of years, and they're happy to be there, but there's no set, you know, this is my term end this year, and I get reappointed or something. There's, at some point, they'll all be, they'll all go off the board, one way or another. So they're working on that, and also working with Attorney Perkins to look at the ordinances, to make sure we do things in a proper way. And, you know, if other parties need to be made, then look at that as well. That's all I have for Tree Board.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, thank you, Councilman. Water Board?
Well, that's EMS Board.
Oh, I'm sorry, EMS.
EMS Board did meet, actually.
They did, okay.
I was not able to go, but Chief Butler was, I'm pissed, if you have anything to say about that.
Sounds like a parrot.
They met February eighth, Gail was in, and she kind of updated them on the software and how it's coordinating with their dispatch and run numbers, all that seemed to be getting worked out. Pat did provide some EMS stats, breaking down by types of run, times of call, age of calls, types of injuries. I have all this information, one of the things I found interesting is with this new software, he's got, he's able to plot by colors, no matter the significant run numbers are, and if you can see, City of Rochester hits red dead center, so. Here's the total report, if you guys want to pass around and look around, but it gives, I said, type runs, when, when the calls come in, the age, if you're fifty-one, seventy-five, you're in a higher call, that you're going to need EMS, figure. But it's all broken down, it's a pretty in-depth report. Another thing you talked about is, we did receive a grant for four new AEDs for Rochester Fire Department, we'll be getting one of those. I completed a survey with EMA, EMS, Lutheran, and the Community Foundation, they're able to secure four new AEDs. We'll update ours, ours is about twenty years old. These are going to be manufactured by Zoll, so they'll go with the EMS, the vivulators, so once we have our So, once we have our pads on, they can come in, just, we can switch pads connections instead of switching the pads, taking those off and reapplying those. Another good thing, Pat said he'll be able to just kind of, when we use them, just get us the pads to resupply through about 150 bucks if we order them through the AED store. Another thing we're working on too, with the Community Foundation, which is pretty interesting, is CPR. And if anyone here's ever been CPR certified, do it for a couple, like 10 minutes, you're pretty well-winded. There is a machine out that'll do compressions. So, I'm working with the Community Foundation. They have come in through the station, I know I've seen two different vendors that they're working on and trying to figure out which vendor's going to be the best. So, we have someone on the second floor trying to do CPR, going down the stairs as near as possible. We apply this machine to them, the machine will do the compressions and we can carry the victim and move them seamlessly. The big thing now with CPR is actually the circulation over the breath, so if we can keep that heart going and that muscle memory, trying to get it kick-started, it's going to be a great benefit. So, that's something that's up and coming. Another thing we talked about is, especially for the outline, to keep your E N T license and your first responder license requires continuing education and Lutheran has been putting on classes out at the station in the evening times as well as providing food before the meeting. So, they're doing their part to try to keep our skies recertified, so pending your questions, that's about all I have for EMS.
Super, very cool. Good report, thanks, Donald. Any questions? Okay, now the Water Board.
Now's the Water Board. All righty. Derek reported to the board that the High Service Building Number One, the old plant is down and until the perilous can, Midwest can get there to take a look at it, it will be fixed.
It will be fixed, yeah.
It will be, okay.
They got a camera at now.
All righty. And Shaw presented the board with the oath offices and the mayor, Red Oath Office, to Marvin, Carolyn, Lloyd, I'll repeat after him, and all the members signed. That was something kind of new this year to be doing on an annual basis, which is something that will be every year, okay. Okay, Tina had a request that probably should have been addressed years ago, but she brought it up and luckily, that's going on, what happens if there's a death or divorce and who pays the meter deposit and who does not pay the meter deposit? Marvin made a motion that if there is a death, then no deposit should be taken when the surviving spouse switches the account into their name, if the account wasn't already in both names with a second from Lloyd and a third from Lloyd. And that's something you probably should have addressed years ago that nobody, a bridge nobody crossed. Okay, Shaw, I introduce Sharon Rock is the new full-time utility clerk at the Water Office. Sharon started on January 28th. And Derek told the board that there was nobody taking vacations in the month of February. You were all shot.
Yeah.
And, Penny, go ahead.
Okay. You've got some further information regarding that situation by kind of talking to the Namco folks?
Yes.
Was that helpful? Did she come back and help you out?
Yeah, Tina made some notes and communicated those to Attorney Perkins so that he can continue his research and then get back to us.
How's the new hire working out?
Really well.
Good, glad to hear that.
She hasn't ran out the door screaming with her hair on fire yet, so that's a good thing.
She's been in public service a while, so she's probably used to...
She has, yeah. And it's, you know, the utility office is one of those, it's not for the faint part of those research because it is a busy office and we've got a lot, lot and a lot of things that you have to learn. I mean, it isn't just a matter of sitting and collecting a check every so often, there's a lot more to it, so, you know, she's doing really well.
And very personable. She's doing well publicly. Bust the mayor's job.
She did really well.
Okay, we don't have any ADA concerns. Any legal issues you want to throw out there?
I just, I did talk with Chief Shotz earlier today, the state of Indiana, I had a Supreme Court issue come back on the issue of civil forfeiture, I don't know if you caught that. Essentially, I think it happened in Marion County or close to it. There was a gentleman who was arrested for dealing and I don't remember which charge he had, but had a maximum fine of $10,000. And they seized a, the seizure happened kind of a separate proceeding, so the state of Indiana filed a complaint to legitimize this seizure of a $42,000 layover. And the trial court said that's far in excess of the fine and it's not really appropriate. Court of Appeals said that it's not really appropriate. And the Indiana Supreme Court looked at it and said, we don't think that part of the Eighth Amendment has ever been applied to the states. And so, we don't, it seems like that's, they're using a federal standard to kick this out. And it went to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court said, no, I think there's enough, enough past case law and historical evidence that the Eighth Amendment, this part of the Eighth Amendment was intended to apply to the states and so they reversed it. And what the chief tells me, the only civil forfeiture the city's been involved in has been through the DEA and so the DEA kind of takes the lead on that. So, we kind of talked about that. I suggested he might keep an eye out for maybe the DEA bringing, bringing down some revision of some of its policies in light of that decision, but it's kind of an interesting look because it's a, a decision. So, nothing, I'll do that.
And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Those in favor?